Welcome to District 25's Town Hall. My name is Jamie Hickory, your district director and in C for tonight. We're joined tonight from members all over the district, some here in person. I think you guys can tell who you are. Some more via Zoom meeting. And even more via Facebook Live. The district is into the 20s. No, 21. Before I introduce our guest interview, a little orientation. For those on the Zoom meeting, your moderator is Matt Daniel. If you want to ask a question, please use the chat function to chat to Matt, and he will surface your question in the meeting here. For those of you in the room with us tonight, Program Quality Director Chris Rendary and Club Growth Director Bobby Madera would have microphones. Oh, who thought to do that? I think that's me. Just simply raise your hand and wait to ask your question until the mic is brought to you. They'll do the best to keep an ordered queue. And don't forget to give us your name when asking the question. We want to make sure that we can hear from as many members as possible, so we ask that you limit yourself to one question at a time. It's like your kids, pick your favorite one. I also have the questions that were submitted during registration to ask. As always, we'll keep the Toastmasters core values of integrity, respect, service, and excellence forefront. One last bit of important information. The women's restroom is here to my right. And the men's restroom is on the left. There are a couple seats each one. Even though I know how much you are enjoying all of this at Zoom, we'll have none further than introduce our guest interview. Our guest tonight joined Toastmasters in 2003. Both Office Depot Toastmasters in 9086 in Boca Raton, Florida. And he admits that honestly, the only reason he went to the meeting to check it out was because they were offering free food. What do you think we have to do tonight? That meeting started his journey to his current position. He has served as a club officer in numerous times in all the roles except club treasurer. An underachiever, I guess. He has served as an area and division director and district trio member, eventually serving as district director for District 47 in Southwest Florida and the Bahamas for the 2012-2013 season. How would you like to do your area visits to the Bahamas? Alongside District 25 past district director Bonnie Strowman, so at the same time they were district director. Professionally, he owns an IT management company, which he has run for the last 13 years. And his wife Janine, also a past district director in District 47. Y'all lay off of my husband. They have been married for almost 31 years and have two children and two grandchildren. Currently serving as a second vice president of Toastmasters International, he helps to set the direction for our organization as a member of the Board of Directors. It's been interesting getting to know Matt over the last weekend. For those of you who don't know, your trio was in training Friday and Saturday where TI comes in and trains us. And we were over in that place over there to our feast. They made me cross the Trinity, y'all. But Matt, it's been great to get to know the festival today. And I'm excited to have him here with us tonight. So please help me welcome our second vice president, distinguished Toastmaster Matt Hickory.
So I cannot claim to be a Texan, but I was a Texas resident for 10 years. My wife is native Texas. She was born in Minneal's. Here at Fort Walter's, actually specifically. Military background. Grew up in Converse Cove, right next to Fort Hood. I spent nine years in the other big city to the south. You know, Houston. I know, I know. Old money, old money. I get it, I get it. But I grew up, I lived there, I went to college there. Used to spend first part of my professional career there. And here in Round Rock, just north of Austin. Before I moved to Florida, this was in 1995. So almost 25 years. So I'm just, I tend a lot of preliminary comments. It's just an honor to be here. It's been great getting to meet your, most of your division directors at dinner meetings. I mean, your past leaders, meeting your club growth team, sharing some ideas. Getting on with the club lead earlier today. Potential new club here at the district law firm. One with District 50 at the same time, starting two clubs in the same corporation. North Richardson area, right?
North Richardson Hills.
North Richard, okay. Sorry, I couldn't really exactly what it was. And I do have some connections here in Fort Worth. My wife's uncle has lived in several areas, Arlington, Plano. But my best man at my wedding transferred away from Halton High School. Okay, so I've been, I've done that drive up I-45 from Houston seven times because his mom made great food. And when your mother's a thousand miles away in Indiana, you know, great home-cooked food, you're living on a college diet. Why don't we need to say much more, do I? Especially Texas prison. There we go. So I just want to see what questions you have. Our international president Deepak Menon asked me to send his regards as well. He is currently on his way back to Delhi. He was in Nashville for their training sessions last weekend as well. He asked me to send his greetings, and he's very glad to be here. And I'm just, Jamie, thank you so much for sending this. You know, when we do a district visit at a conference, we get an opportunity to visit with a lot of people in districts. And when we come after mid-year training, we always don't, don't always get that opportunity. So I asked Jamie if she would consider this idea, and they ran with it. And you guys are here, so thank you very much.
Let's start with one of the questions that I got from the registration. And this one, I like this one. What was the hardest thing you had to overcome as a public speaker?
I've got to be honest with you. I've been speaking in front of groups for 45 years. And I never had any fear of speaking. And the hardest thing I've had to overcome is perfectionism. If someone tells you as a speaker you were perfect, that's actually not a good thing. Okay? And I love Toastmasters. I help love meeting people getting control of their ahs and ons. But in the real world, if you don't have any ahs and ons, they don't listen to you. So that's something I had to get over, is not being perfect. And I think it's something we struggle with in all walks of life. You know, this, we've got to get over ourselves. And speakers, I think the biggest thing I learned, it's not getting over, but it's... It's the speaker voice. You must listen to me. I am the speaker. Who are you? What the? You know, it's natural conversation. That's what speakers want. Especially in audiences outside of Toastmasters. And it's really funny, they'll listen to it. Because, oh, I'm just going to warn you, I'm going to break so many Toastmasters rules today. So if you're a natural ah-ker, just get over it, okay? Because we're just going to relax and have a conversation. And that's really fun. To me, the article with speaking ass is having a conversation. A slightly elevated conversation. Right? But it's a conversation, even if only one person is talking. And you have to remember that as a speaker. Everything you're saying, you know, somebody in here is going, oh my God, I just talked to my Uncle Joe. Uncle Joe never paid you a dollar. He still owes me a hundred. Well, what was he saying? There's a conversation going on in your minds right now. There's a conversation going on in my mind right now. And as a speaker, we have to be aware of that. And you know what? It's okay. So don't get hung up on that person who answers other phone. That person who looks like they're distracted. Just be in the moment and have a conversation.
So the voices in the head are normal?
Absolutely.
That's good information. That's good friends. Do you see Toastmasters developing materials or manuals that are more acceptable to corporations?
That was honestly part of the design pathways. Yeah, we can have a reasonable discussion about how successful that was. Okay, but what we're finding when we're talking to corporations, and especially to the people in the HR department, is the program is much more attractive to them. Because they see clear objectives, they see clear projects that tie to those objectives. And so that's, and when they look at that, what they see is something that fits in with their model. The challenge is not the program so much. The challenge is the way we traditionally presented the program to corporations. And so there's been some recent work that the board has done to examine that and how we strengthen that relationship between corporations, organizations, and Toastmasters. So there's some early thoughts out on that. And you've seen Pat Johnson's book. That kind of gives you some general direction, but there's still some ongoing work to say, how do we become a trusted partner of these corporations? Okay, of the Fortune 500 companies, we're in over 400 of the Fortune 500 companies. So companies are seeing value in it. I was talking to Bobby, it's like sometimes they think, sometimes people think Toastmasters is too cheap for corporations. Let's be honest, you know, like, well, what can a program that costs $90 a year be worth? And so you have to look at the opportunity cost. Well, it's not just $90 a year. If you're putting somebody in there, that's 50 hours of their time a year. How much does that worth? Times 20 people. All of a sudden, you've got a program that's $125,000, $150,000 of opportunity cost and cost. And now they look at that and just remember that makes sense to them, and they see they're getting valued. So it's not the discussion you go into lightly. But it's, that's where our relationship with partner, our work relationship with organizations is going to change over time.
I want to open it up to the floor, so if I have any questions. Will you get a microphone to you?
Yes, please. I think that we have members live, and if you're not using the microphone, they will not hear you. Okay.
Yep, I was just wondering, there was a recent controversy that seemed to be on some of the Toastmasters message boards about that they were going to revise the rules to not allow international speakers to address the material of other international speakers in that contest.
That's right.
But I wasn't sure if revisions were coming through this year or is that something binding to the future?
That will take place in the next year's cycle. Okay, so we've all seen it. You know, somebody gets up there, does a great speech, they get a great line, and another speaker later borrows that line and gets a big laugh. It's a great technique as a speaker. In the context of the speech contest only, it has provided an unfair advantage in the minds of many people. Because you're not really standing alone. You're borrowing other people's content. So starting with the 2020-2021 contest cycle, that will not be allowed. And that will become a disqualifiable item. Same as any other disqualifiable item. You'd need to review that with the judges, and judges will then make a decision. But that's really the reason for it. We've got, they received a number of complaints about apparent unfairness.
Good question. Another one?
Hi, thanks for being here. My name is Cassie Bolick. I'm with the Arlington New and Toastmasters. And I'm curious about the alliance with Rotary Club.
Okay, so how many of you have read the email that came out? All right, that's pretty much where we're at right now. We, an agreement that is working towards developing some educational opportunities for rotarians that are watered-down versions of what you get in the Toastmasters Pathways Project. So they are not getting something that you don't have access to. And that was a concern I had when we first talked about it. I didn't want anything created that Toastmasters would, that would be superior to what we're offering to our members. So they're offering something to help rotarians develop their own leaders and hats. So what does this mean to you? Whatever you want it to mean. There's no requirement for your club to do anything to support this. Right? Now, how many of you have ever had a rotarian who's called and asked to come talk to your club? How many times has a rotary, a rotary club called and asked if there's a Toastmaster who might want to come and speak at their club? That will continue. What you will see is in the Toastmasters magazine, you're going to start seeing more information about Rotary. In the Rotary magazine, you're going to start seeing more information about Toastmasters. Our international president, Mark Doley, spoke at the Rotary Convention last year. I don't know, but I would not be surprised if Deepak Menon doesn't speak there this year. And I wouldn't be surprised if somebody from Rotary speaks at the Toastmasters International Convention this year. We're getting exposed to a million people worldwide in 200 countries, many of whom have never heard of Toastmasters. So it's a good thing for us. We're getting compensated for developing this training program. It helps us become more recognized as a leader in this space. And it provides the framework for other potential partnerships where we can help organizations develop their own leaders through projects. Now, the one thing that might be a little different is you may get more calls from rotary clubs. Because there's going to be a desire for them to get evaluated by a Toastmaster. As opposed to being evaluated by somebody in the rotary club. So they may come and say, can I come and speak and get evaluated at your club? Or can you send a Toastmaster to our club and evaluate a couple of people? That's your choice as a member. It's an opportunity. If you don't want to do it, don't do it. If you want to do it, great. So that's really what it boils down to. So I believe Houston may be where we do the official launch of the program. That's not to be decided yet. It's not 100%. They're leaning towards Houston right now because we've got a good rotary presence and a good Toastmasters presence. We're already working together. There's actually some rotary clubs that have Toastmasters clubs within already. They need three weeks out of the month as rotary club, and they need one week out of the month as a Toastmaster club. So that already is happening. And that may happen more. And we may get some undistricted clubs in parts of the world where we don't have clubs today. So we'll see what it leads to. But how does it affect your club however you want it to? Does that happen?
Good question. I know we have a lot of questions around Rotary too. Just in the fourth area, I believe there's over five rotary clubs. They're very similar to Toastmasters, that they have their lots of chapters and items like Toastmasters. Is there ever, another question?
Oh, he's written, he's in East End. I'm Sandra Weinstein. I'm with Progressive Toastmasters. I joined Toastmasters about five years ago because I wanted to become better at reading and giving speeches about things I was passionate about. And I actually thought it was a lot of fun. And I just finished my first Pathways, and you're right, it was written for a corporation. I kind of found myself giving speeches, I gave it work. I've thought about creating programs for clubs like ours that were not trying to get good at, you know, presenting marketing plans, but rather just becoming better at talking about things we enjoy talking about.
Yep, so... I forgot the best way to say this. So whenever you launch a new program, you miss some opportunities. And we missed a big opportunity with the humorous path, and that's been addressed in that. So be engaged with humor. I do see future additional paths coming. But I can also tell you, I'm in a community club. And we've, members have had very little difficulty adapting their stories, their things, their fun things they want to talk to to fit the requirements of the path. So there are some projects that's a little difficult to do, but there are a lot of opportunities there. But I do see additional paths coming. A couple they might talk about, I don't, there's nothing official yet. But I've heard conversations about a parliamentary procedure path, for those who are interested in that. Maybe not a full path, but a small path. Humor, advanced humor, storytelling, advanced speaking skills. So they're looking at other opportunities because they have heard that from members. But the other thing I just want to remind you, from the organization as a whole, the average member stays about two and a half years. And it takes about two and a half years to get through two paths. So I think that's why we started there. And now we're looking to see what else we can do. So if you have specific ideas of things you would like to see, drop those to Toastmasters International. There's, on the Toastmasters website, probably send that to, who would you recommend they send that to? Member Services? Yeah, send it to Member Services and just say, hey, have you ever thought about a path this way? When they hear from the members, I'm going to tell you honestly. I can get up in the board and say, oh, I think this is a great idea. But when they hear from the members, it means more. So if you've got specific ideas that you want to see, whatever, debate, let them know. People got a lot of fun with the debate.
I know.
Okay? It can be a lot of fun. And there used to be debate contests. And they wouldn't have been Toastmasters long enough for everyone to debate contests and they were officially part of the program. So yeah, it used to be that. So, no, no. You heard about it, right? There you go.
He just wants to be in the debate contest, is what Alex wants. And I want to echo what Matt is saying about contacting Toastmasters International. They will respond. They'll read your email. It doesn't end up in the trash somewhere. It doesn't end up in the spade like Chuck Holder. They do read it. All right. Will the board be looking at extending the timeline for members who have been actively working on completing their requirements for their TTM? No, it's not.
That may be no sideline. Not likely. Okay? We've had this deadline out here for three years. It's a defined deadline. For five years, people have known it's coming. So what is my encouragement to you? Put the pedal to the metal, and if you're worried about getting it done, get it done. Okay, we talked to a member today in South Lake. She had moved here from another district. She's got nearly 10 stages to do. And Mary was like, I'm going to call the clubs around, and we're going to make sure you get those 10 stages. All right? And it's up to her to get it done, but we're going to get the opportunity. The Pathways program is so different in so many ways. And we cannot continue to support both programs on an organizational basis. The board just made a decision about clubs in prison facilities. Okay, Pathways is very difficult to implement. Their lack of internet access. There are, they don't have email addresses. There are logistical issues. Some prisons, prisoners cannot take officer roles. Because you cannot have a prisoner who lays authority over another prisoner. Because of gang concerns. And the message we told them is if you can figure out how to make Pathways work in your facility, you can stay on Ranger Toastmasters Club. If you can't, then we're going to allow you to convert to a gavel club. And the district will not be penalized for that as long as you ask on my June 30. So, because we've got a couple of districts that have a large number of clubs and facilities like that.
More questions for the group?
That was a nice way to say no.
Hi, I'm Neil Ossman from South Lake. Relatively dear to Toastmasters, so maybe this question is silly. But I think it's really admirable that we bring 400 of the Fortune 500 clubs. But I work with small business owners. And I know lots of them would be benefiting from Toastmasters if there was a program that was a little bit more tailored to small business. I'm not sure if that's something I'm engaging over, or something you've been trying to enhance.
Yeah, like I said, send those ideas in specifically. I know that we got through Pathways implementation. There have been a number of changes on the interface. Because that was where most of the concerns and complaints were coming from, was on the interface. And especially, I know we've got some software people out here, especially some user design people who are not really happy with the design interface. And there have been a lot of improvements. And there's more coming. But I think the next thing they're going to be doing is looking at the content of each of the paths and looking at potential new paths. So there's a lot that we can use. My home club is mostly entrepreneurs and business people. So the dynamic leadership, the one that's really great is strategic relationships. That's fantastic. If you've got an entrepreneur, get them into strategic, strategic relationships. That is a wonderful path for an entrepreneur, for a salesperson.
Can I have information? I think we had a question up here.
I'm George, not from Highway to Excellence. There's been a lot of discussion amongst some of the older members about building blocks, the competent communicator offered, and not seeing it in the past. Is there any discussion, any, bringing in some more in there?
So eight of the projects are available in the paths today. Okay, they are optional, and they're in the optional path. So what we don't have is a building block path. And so I'm going to, I'm going to get a little philosophical here. So this debate about building block versus holistic is not this debate that's going on at Toastmasters. It's going on in adult education. What is the best way for adults to learn? And there's a wide spectrum of thought on that. For those who don't know, and you know, I know no one in this room was there, you know, the first 30 years of Toastmasters, but there were nomans for 30 years. You got up and you spoke, and people reacted to it. Now, we didn't go back that far, but we went back to a little more holistic approach. Here are your objectives, get up and deliver it. And there are optional projects if you want to work on those first things. Was that the right approach? I can't say 100% it was or it wasn't. It's just, it's a different approach. We've heard that concern from existing members. That concern from new members has been almost non-existent. Okay? They don't know. But what we're finding, what we're finding that people who are enrolled in Pathways are renewing at a higher rate. They are renewing at a higher rate that is statistically significant. Okay? They are gaining awards faster, which was by design. But more of them are getting recognition. Which, we know the research says that the under-40 crowd is highly driven by recognition. Okay? Legitimate recognition, not participation programs. Okay, legitimate recognition. They are driven by that. Okay, my son is 30, my daughter's 28. I know that that has been a driving factor for both of them, is recognition support. So there are things that we're doing that are ringing them on. My anecdotal experience is I'm seeing members progress about the same way. Okay, so I'm not seeing a big difference that the members aren't progressing. And when somebody says, you know, I'm really struggling with my organization, well, here's the optional project for that. I'm struggling with, you know, visual aids, here's the project for that. So just make sure you look at all those projects. Because eight of the 10 are there. What's not there is the inspirational speech and the motivational speech. And those two are not there.
The flyers in there. How did that speech?
Well, it's very different from, from Project 9, or Project 10.
I think there was a question around the center of the room, your center of the room?
General Jesse Lewis is the director. Now that I don't trust you, and maybe I just haven't produced all the materials, but is there a way to see those statistics and look at that evaluation and that research so that we can communicate that, as well as provide the stories to numbers and readers who write to us?
So, so the numbers are, I know that, I believe, Bobby, you've got some of those numbers from Holycore's? On the retention rates? If you got any.
The adoption rate.
Okay, I know the adoption rate continues to go. I will, I will see what's available that is shared, that's in a shareable format. Okay, these are early numbers on that. But the, and the other point was, the other question was?
It was just knowing where to access.
Okay. Yeah, that data is not published on the website today. Okay, it's an early number. We're waiting to see if the trend continues, but it's looking positive. And Toastmasters growth is back up to almost 4% this year, after a couple of flat years. So we're at 3.8% member payment growth, which is another good sign that Pathways has had a positive impact.
There's been a question up here. Is this here at the high enough? See, you can get to your first race.
Two questions in a row!
While I'm, Chris Hall, for listening to Toastmasters. While I'm aware of the accredited speaker program, I'm not quite aware of the full scope of it. I'm fairly certain this is not a part of it. I'm interested in us, like some other speaking clubs that I've been aware of, about perhaps involving ourselves with high-level speakers that are doing on our... There's some speaking clubs, for example, that have people like Les Brown and stuff like that. Is there any way, in any scope in the future, that we're going to maybe partner with individuals like that? So they can go see speakers at that level, or get discounts, or even just come to their conference with some people like that of a high level? Just curious on that, in our scope of...
Okay, so there's about 17 questions in there. So our mission at Toastmasters is not to make professional speakers. And that's just young. That's not what our mission is. And I don't think that will ever become our mission. And I don't think that will ever become our mission. That is the mission of National Speakers Association. Okay? And we don't want to impinge on their space and they don't want to impinge on ours. We live very peacefully in coexistence with each other. Okay? And there are many high-level speakers. Ed Tate is a certified speaking professional. Darren McBroy is a certified speaking professional. They practice in Toastmasters. And if you go to an NSA meeting or, you know, I don't know what the Texas group is called. It's for the Speakers Association where I'm at. You know, they will tell you, go practice your material in Toastmasters. It's a great place to practice. So in terms of discounts, things like that, nothing that I'm aware of because that's not our mission. Okay? Now, can you have a conference where you bring in speakers? Well, that's up to your district leadership. There's nothing in Toastmasters that would prohibit that. But what we don't want is them selling their stuff on your platform and trying to make all of you our customers. All right, so we have enough of that with some world champions. I'm not naming any names. All right? But we also have some of that with local speakers we bring in. Well, here's my book and they're parking them up some of the, that's not what we want. Because that's not who we are as an organization. So if that's what you're looking for as a next step, or if you know people are looking for that, I really highly encourage them, go speak, seek out the local NSA affiliate, whatever it is in this area. Is it Texas Speakers?
NSA.
It's just NSA, okay? And so I would encourage them to go speak. That's what their mission and life is. Fair? Okay?
Other questions? I think Sandy was first.
Sandy Swan, progressive leaders. Want to know if there's going to be any clarification on level one, which confuses people a lot, and on those roles for the meeting roles? A lot of people don't see that the meeting role requirements are there. They're well-hidden. You have to really know they're there and have them down. And then on level one, you get to that next, after you do the icebreaker. It starts out and says, give speech one. And people think they've already given speech one. They think that the icebreaker is speech one. And so could that be clarified and broken out a little bit better so people can follow that sequence?
Okay. So can that happen? Certainly, anything can happen. Am I the person who can make that happen? Absolutely not. Okay, that board does not get involved in that level of discussion. We're looking at the direction of the organization. So once again, and I'll repeat this, you know, as I need to, it doesn't bother me. The best place to send those specific types of things is through Member Services. Send them, here's the confusion I'm having, here's a suggestion I have on how to address it. If you're, if you're having trouble doing that, send a note to Jamie. She'll be glad to help you pass that on. Or Mary Lee or Jamie, they both worked with Toastmasters over the years and can help you pass the information on. That's really where it gets solved. Because if there's confusion in there, yeah, let's clean it up. All right? But the board does not get involved in the instructional design of how that works. So is that, I know that doesn't solve your question. But I know that when members write in with suggestions like that, they look at them and they make changes. You even talked to Jamie about her experience with district leader training and the improvement over the last three years. And that's come from the feedback of our district leaders saying, we want more of this, we want less of that. We want to see this, we don't want to see that. And some of the frustrations Robbie may have had, Jamie didn't have this year. She may have had a new one, but she didn't have those frustrations. Okay? So that's real, I'm not the one who solved that. All I can do is empathize with you and if there's things in there like that, I'll certainly ask and certainly would vote to fund efforts to fix those issues, to make our members' experience better.
In the training this weekend, we went through an exercise where I believe we tied Bobby to a raft out in the middle and set him on fire so he could be rescued off the phones. And then I think it was decided I was going to be eaten first, what started with my leg. It was an exercise we went through. All right, we have a question from our Zoom meeting.
The question is from Denise. When will the Successful Club, SpeechCraft and other projects be updated for Pathways?
All right, so SpeechCraft revamp is underway. They are working on it today. One of the challenges we have with SpeechCraft right now is we have potential members out there that we can't track as an organization. And as an organization, that's not good. We have no idea who they are. And if any of you have ever done any type of funnel marketing for your business or been involved with it, what do you do? You have people spend a little bit of money, get a little bit of involvement, then you can attract them to do more. And so there is going to be a revamp of youth leadership and speech craft. It is underway. Do not know the timeframe for when that's going to be completed, but that is underway. The Successful Club series, here's the challenge of Successful Club series right now. If you look at the August board minutes, you'll see in the August board minutes, and there is a committee reviewing club leadership roles, responsibilities and feedback. Their work is not completed. So until that work is completed and they make recommendations to the board that the board accepts, and let's be honest, if there are club leadership role changes, who has to go on those? The members. The members have to go on those because those are in the club constitution so that the members would have to accept those. So until that process is complete, I do not anticipate them changing the Successful Club series. After that process is completed, we have clarity on the direction we're going. You know, if the board makes some recommendations, the members reject it, then we would be where we are today. Okay, and we can revise it. If the board makes a recommendation and the members accept it, then that would kick off revising training, revising manuals, revising Successful Club series and those types of factors. So that's the best answer I can give you there on Zoom call. SpeechCraft and Youth Leadership are underway. Successful Club series to be determined after the board completes some of its hard work.
Hi Matt, my name's Alan. I had a question on student membership. When I was Pathways God, I learned that a university had a lot of difficulty with the students, students remaining members because they disappeared for a chunk of the year. Do we have any plans afoot on a different style of membership, different flavor of membership that might help support this?
So there has been a committee of past international presidents working on university club ideas. Right now, we're implementing a change in our core system where all of our member records are gone. And after that's complete, they're going to be able to book at the University Club. Some things that have been considered are annual or semester payments, a different training schedule, not training them in June and July when the students aren't there, and December and January when the students aren't there. Now, this year, the board approved starting district leader training in November. So now students are there in November, so there's a greater opportunity to get them trained. But we're, of course, looking at university clubs. So the first thing you do in an organization is you look at your census of clubs, for lack of a better word. And the largest number of our clubs are community clubs. So if we're going to spend time and effort to fix a problem, that's where we're going to spend it first. Then the board, last year, worked on corporate clubs because they are our second-largest block. The next-largest block is university clubs. So there is work ongoing, what the recommendations are going to end up being, what the policy changes are going to end up being, I don't know. But I do know some of the things that have been talked about because we're aware of some of the challenges with university clubs. And in some districts, particularly Portugal, a huge percentage of their club clubs. It's about half of their clubs are college/university days, another quarter are recovery days. And if you think you've got problems with college clubs, try to get a name out of a government club. So government clubs with five annual payment cycles, a lot of corporate clubs with five annual payment cycles. So those ideas have been talked about. They're dependent on the enterprise resource planning, so stay tuned.
Wait, a question up front here for Cheryl.
Yes. One of my problems, I was in Toastmasters 89 to 95. Came back a year and a half ago. Toastmasters has no record I existed. I do have my paperwork. I served as an area governor at the time. I didn't go through DTM at the time. Can that be used since I have the paperwork towards my DTM now?
Yes. Is it easy? It may be a little difficult. But I'm willing to direct you to somebody here in the district to assist you with that, and that is your program quality director. So please give the information. He's the right person to assist you with that. So give him that information and he can help you with Toastmasters International. We have a member, and my club is in a similar situation, and it took a few emails back and forth, but they finally get it rectified. If you have an old member number on a magazine, a certificate, anything like that that can help you out, then I'd certainly back the resolve.
That's the point of the first that Pathways has done is now the record is still there.
Well, they're current, yes. On Pathways, we don't have to worry about any records from 2000 on. They're there, okay? It's a previous system. They made the decision that their records, they were a certain age old, they didn't necessarily transfer all of those, which is a decision a lot of businesses make when they transfer systems. And every year, we get three or four people who are in your situation and they go through research and they're able to resolve it. So it can be resolved, absolutely. It takes some effort.
What I'm imagining is they probably have to go back to later fish.
If you have a certificate and can scan that, that will help you.
I'm not sure who was next, Chris.
So Toastmasters.
And I think you are.
Faith Louise Cooper, I will be transformed to urging Toastmasters.
Yay!
Yay, thank you!
So Toastmasters tagline is where leaders are made. In my understanding, mission that we'd be the go-to for leadership training. Yet you still hear a lot about Toastmasters as a communication. What are we doing to help us quick to showcase the leadership side of it, to get that strengthened more?
Okay. So I want to be clear is that we want to be the go-to for experiential-based learning on leadership. Okay? We're not going to be a university, we're not going to be Harvard University and writing research paper on leadership theory. We're about experiential leadership development. So what we're doing is Pathways, if you look, nine of the Colonel Levin Pathways are leadership-based. Okay? If you talk to your program quality director, he is one of that percentage of people who joined Toastmasters because of leadership. He was sharing that with me yesterday in the car. He joined because of leadership. We're seeing that percentage increase every year, more and more people are joining, at least in part because of the opportunity to develop the leadership. So the other things we're doing is you're seeing a lot more public relations work. I think we were probably at about between 4,500 and 5,000 articles, interviews, et cetera, around the world last year. Okay, that's a lot of free publicity. And we're commenting on communication and leadership issues. So there's a lot we're doing there, but it's about experiential leadership, so I don't want to get anyone confused. We're not trying to be the owner of the space on leadership theory and leadership in the 22nd century eventually. We're like about nose to the ground, getting it done, making sure that people are learning through experience. My experience says it's the only way to really learn. You can read everything. My first job as a manager, I had read so many management books, okay? I think I made my first mistake seven minutes into my new job. Because why? Because I hadn't actually thought through that situation. Rolling helps, but it's still different when you have to deal with that situation. So that's what we want to help you do, is getting that experience in leadership roles, moving, starting at the club. And those who want to progress further, the opportunities in the area, the opportunities at the district. Now Jamie's running a district of 37, 3800 members, sharing, you know, with, closer to 3,000. You know, a decent-sized budget, not a huge budget, a decent-sized budget. And if she chooses to, she has opportunities to potentially become a regional advisor or a national director. If she chooses to, I'm not pressured. No, I'm not pressured. Problem's out, I'm not pressured. Okay? But, you know, David Calister, now an opportunity to serve on the international board directors. I've had that opportunity, now I'm serving. And should the stars continue to align for me in three years in San Antonio, I'll become the international president. Okay? Of an organization of 400,000 members. You know, probably by that time, 150 countries. That's a significant leadership role. And running an organization with a budget of over $40 million. I started working in the IT department at Office Depot, going into a club to get free pizza. So are we doing stuff to develop leaders? Absolutely. Are we becoming, have we become more deliberate about the leadership development with Pathways? Absolutely. I remember, I'm going to share this one, David. So David and I had a joke where leaders are accidentally made. Okay? And now we're becoming where leaders are intentionally made. Because we have a program that is much more suited to leadership development. I can't tell you how many board meetings we've been in where people are like, well, what's our leadership development program? Where one of the, where leaders are made, what's our program? Now we have a better answer. Is it the end-all, be-all answer? No. Is it far better than anything we've had over the last 90 years? Yeah. And is it going to continue to get better? Absolutely.
Chris, I'm going to show you who's next.
My name is St. Patrick, I'm back from Toastmasters. Nobody else is here on your own, so we're allowed to rap.
There you go.
You were indicating earlier that they have their everywhere from previous 2000s that you've been still using that information to get your DTM. I have an issue in the fact that when I try to go back to active bonus records, it only goes back to 2003 when you look it up online.
Okay.
And I've asked for the type of working things to be, for them to go through to their motivation, whatever, and find that information because we think the existence is 1986.
Okay.
So we would not have that information, it was unfortunately lost to us. How do I go about getting that?
The group to talk to is Club Quality and Support to see if they have anything they can find in their records. Club Quality and Support at Toastmasters. And I think it's clubqualityandsupport@toastmasters.org. Don't quote me on the email address. But if you look at that, they'll help you with whatever they can. They're very helpful. That is one thing I do tell you is when you get to talk to them and say, here's what we're doing, they'll tell you what they can find. I know the board just, we just got a report that they just finished digitizing all of the board records back to the 70s. You know, those are legal records that they have to keep, but that's been a project that's been on the last two years. And now they've got every, all of the old corporate minutes, everything's been digitized, so it's easily searchable for us. Because the board sometimes goes, well, why did we make that decision, you know, 15 years ago? Now we can find out why the decision was made a lot easier.
Something I've also discovered when contacting TI is get an email that's close and just let them know, I'm not sure if this is you, and if it's not, they'll direct you to the email, then that is correct.
Yeah. And the more information you can give them, the better they can help you.
Good afternoon, I'm Amanda Voskis, Division G Director. I have a question about our future for Toastmasters International. What is something that excites you or that is something that you can share with us about Toastmasters?
You know, what excites me about Toastmasters is that we are continuing to make a huge impact globally. Okay? When I look at, we're going to have in August, we're going to have our first international convention in Europe. All right, we'll probably have 4,000 or 5,000 people. I mean, I get to have a hearing of people from Europe all the time, like I'm getting on the train and going to Paris. All right, because that's what they do in Europe. They get on the train and they go to Paris. In Texas, you drive your truck. Some Texans can drive a truck, okay? It's a little longer, but you get there all the same. It's not like driving to Paris that's a little foggy. That's Kerry's stuff. Yeah, it's got a small life in town. But there's free access, to be clear. So what also excites me is the evolution of the board of directors. Okay? Our board, I've talked to past board members. When I was getting ready to run for the board, I called everybody who took my call. Okay? And I called people who didn't take my call the first time I called them again until I took my call. And I'd ask questions. And, you know, I was told from some board members from years ago, okay, well, your first year on the board, do not open your mouth in the board meetings. And I'm like, I'm not signing up for that. Okay? And then I talked to people where the board had evolved. And they're like, no, you're expected to contribute, okay? You're expected to be there. And in our first, in our board orientation, by the end of our two-day orientation, every single new board member had spoken at least once and contributed something at least once. And the president at the time, my sorkey, said, I've never seen that before. Okay? That everyone spoke. So the board evolution is helpful. The board evolution and the way we're, the change from a few years ago where the international directors were working on writing content for manuals and trying to govern the organization. We don't do that now. We govern the organization. We look at the policies, we look at the finances, we look at the leadership through this chief executive officer, and we don't direct the staff, we direct the chief executive officer. And he directs the staff. So that is an evolution that has been very healthy for the organization. The fact that we're growing again, you know, almost 4%, that's fantastic. That is a sign of a healthy organization. Because when you see a couple of years that are flat, you're like, okay, is this the beginning of a downward spiral, or is this just a little bump? It looks like it was just a little bump. Okay? Because now we're back on track. That's exciting. We're going to be a half a million members. We're going to get exposed to a million members in Rotary. There's going to be other alliance opportunities. We're going to continue to improve Pathways. There's so many things to be excited about, but the thing I'm most excited about is the number of new members and new clubs we got this year. Why? Because those are additional people that are going to be positively influenced by Toastmasters. And it's not what happens in the club that excites me. I love the club. I love that laboratory environment where you can try something and there's no real consequence. Think about that. How many places can you go and go, you know, I'm going to just try this, and if it doesn't work, no big deal? Can you do that at your work? You're probably not. Okay? Can you do that at church? You're probably not. All right? But you can do that at Toastmasters, and there's no real consequence. And you can try things, and you can get out of your comfort zone, and you're in a safe, supportive environment. And I can tell you, the world needs safe and supportive environments today more than ever. Just look at the conflict around the world. Can you wish for a safe space? How many of you is Toastmasters a safe space? Yeah? That's what excites me. That's what gets me going, because I see people change their lives to the Toastmasters program. And I see Toastmasters change people's lives. It's fun. We get this debate, you know, does Toastmasters change people's lives, or do people change their lives to Toastmasters? Yes. Yes. I was having, I had a conversation, I think it was with Jamie, about working on the board of directors and the executive committee. And the comment I made was that if you don't grow in that environment, you're actively fighting it. And I think if you don't grow in Toastmasters, you're actively fighting because you can't help but grow if you just open yourself to opportunity. So what excites me about the future is where we come from, where we're going, and where we are today. It's all exciting. There's no new pathways on the horizon, okay? There's no new majorly disruptive thing.
Woo! Thank you.
Okay? We're going to continue to take what we've established and make it better. And we need that right now, because we have enough massive change.
I've got a question up front here. And we are at the four-minute mark, so if you have a burning question.
In the interest of making it better, we've heard rumors in the past of allowing members like Amazon and so on allows their members to do, to pay for their own memberships.
Yes.
Is there any progress on that?
Yes.
I think you're there to progressively...
Yes. So that project has been approved. The funding has been approved by the board. And once the new core system that I spoke about earlier is in place, that project will be completed.
So in three years, man.
Here's the thing with, do we have a definitive delivery date on the current core system? No. Is it getting close? Yes. Finance, the finance modules went in, which is the next to last piece. And the last piece, the scariest piece, it's where all your member records are. Now, do you want us to do that right?
Yes.
Do you want us to take the time to do it right?
Yeah.
So they're going to take the time. I don't think it's going to be three years, okay? Can I tell you it's going to be three months or six months? No. But I don't think it's going to be three years. Okay, I will say this. I think if it's going, if it's going to be three years, there will be a change in leadership somewhere in the senior level of the organization. Which position, I don't know. We'll not make it through in three years, okay?
Hi, I'm Marquita Gardner, Microsoft, Southwest 365. Just a question for you. Share at least one thing that you are most proud of, that you've impacted or influenced.
All right, well, I'm going to get personal here. My son's 30. He is one of the most respected Toastmasters in our district. Over the last two and a half years, he's done over 100 Pathways presentations. He's getting ready to complete his second DTM, and he's put his name in for program quality director of our district at 30 years old. Is he going to be elected? I don't know. But the ability to influence a child, I mean, a man now, a substantial man, who has good ethics, who is a fabulous presenter, who is well-loved and respected around the district, anything else I've done has to occur through that.
Yeah.
That was in Toastmasters. And I think Jody can attest to this somewhat. I know Robbie can attest to this. I think Mary Lee can attest to this because I think she interviewed me in Malaysia. The loss in Malaysia, when I ran for international director. And the soul searching that caused me. The willingness to explore, well, why wasn't I as well-received as I needed to be to get elected? Was, it's something I am proud of, that I was willing to open myself up to do that and to tear down those walls. And the one thing you will hear consistently about me, and you can ask anybody who saw me, is in 2014, was I smart? Was I as smart as I am today? Yeah. That doesn't change, okay? Was I as open to other people as I am today? No. Was I as authentic as I am today? No. Do I still have more to grow? Absolutely. But I opened myself up to that because of that loss, and I am proud of that. And the one thing I hear people who saw me in 2014, saw me in 2016, it was a positive, who are you? Because we almost don't recognize you because of the change. I went from 35% of the vote to 78% of the vote in a four-person race. Okay? And I can tell you right now, if I had won election in Malaysia, I would not be under the executive candy today. So what does that mean for you? I don't know. I don't know what your blind spots are. I don't know what the things that are inhibiting you are. Be open to hearing those messages, and hopefully don't make yourself go through a painful loss. Because it was painful to allow yourself to be open to exploring that. So am I proud of that? Yeah. And should I be? I think so.
Here. Jamie, one final question.
It's not really a question, it's just a comment. Yes, Matt, we did remember interviewing you with the leadership. And I can tell you how pleased we were to see that you ran again. Please.
Glad for being here tonight. I have learned a lot, and I hope that you guys have also. Hopefully, this is worth it for you. Our little dinner and a show was kind of what we had here. A little dinner and a show. So of course, we always have guests for people. This is our 70th anniversary. I know you already had the challenge point, so I'm giving you the focus pen. So now you can wear the pen along with a little Texas that I heard you got at Salm.
I did.
And I know you used to live in Texas, but we can all wait, phone up on it. And this is just the most awesomest book. If you guys have never seen this, the title of it is, Y'all Will Need This Book. And it takes you through dance in the Texas way, speak in Texas. There's a whole section in here that gives you a simulation of driving through Texas. And all it is is a horizon, and it's the same one for like 10 minutes. And then if that doesn't sell you on the book, on the back it says, I've been using this book to keep my table from wobbling. Works great. So thank you so much. Over. Well, I didn't finish up. For me to give Matt just breathe a room for a minute, if you would like to get some water or attend to other things for a moment.
That's my English.
Oh, when you speak about your kids, it happens, doesn't it? I want to give a big thank you, and I'm sure you guys do, to our food providers tonight, Tammy Castorkey and Joe Morrison. Center pieces, if you will leave the bowls, but you can take all the items in the center piece. If you didn't have plans for dinner tomorrow night, you now have it. Also, I want to thank a couple other people. Joyce, the chair of all of our volunteers tonight. Joyce, you're volunteering to help on four of these. Technologically, do this without Matt, Daniel, and Charlie Bowles. Thank you so much. The pictures with Matt will be over here in front of the older banner vinyl movies that are just registered for Brandon. Give Matt just a couple minutes, and if you guys want to go ahead and queue up, and we'll have volunteers over there to help you. Thank you so much for taking your time to be with us here tonight. Good night.